...in a roll call.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callen.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Cober.
Here.
Mayor Canopa.
Here. Okay, we have a couple special presentations this evening and the first one is our Albany Fire Department Life Saving Awards and Chief Bradner, would you like to come forward? And I think you lost just about half your crew on some calls, I saw them take off.
We did. They took off on a motor vehicle accident on the other side of town, so they apologized, but I said that takes precedence.
Yes, it does.
Somebody dying, yeah.
All right, well, my name's John Bradner, the Fire Chief of Albany Fire Department, and it's my honor tonight to recognize three individuals for saving other individuals' lives. As a fire department, we're charged with protecting our community from harm, but we're limited in what we can do because we can't be in all places at all times. So it really requires us to elicit the help from the community, the public, the people that are in our community, the people that are traveling through our community. And tonight, we have examples of both people in our community and people traveling through our community that ultimately allowed us to do our job to the highest level that we could that resulted then in saving individuals' lives. So if Tim Bias and Dr. Emily Rangel could come forward and stand over to my left, please. So exactly one month ago today, on August 27th, at about 1:30 in the afternoon, they were traveling northbound on I-5 and they experienced something that I know that I don't like, and that's slowdown of traffic on I-5 heading northbound. And it just so happened that that event that day led to saving an individual's life. So as traffic at mile plus 231, just two miles south of town was slowing down, another car being driven by Martin Moore from Lyons, Oregon slowed down, came to a stop, and then drifted back into your car?
No.
Into another car. And that's when Tim went into action, as I understand it, got out, realized the driver of the pickup truck was having issues, and so pulled him out, started doing CPR, and then Dr. Emily Rangel hopped in with another off-duty police officer who's unidentified at this point in time, and they started doing CPR on Martin Moore. And they did it until our medics arrived, and if I read the information correctly, you got a pulse back on him? Or did you get a pulse back? No? Okay. So no pulse back, our medics got there, we transported to the hospital, and that's probably the last that you heard about it, I would guess, until we got ahold of you and let you know that Martin Moore actually lived. He was extremely fortunate that you guys were there, he was extremely fortunate, as our community was, that you guys took the risk, got out of your vehicles, and actually went and started performing CPR. So with that, I want to present you with a fire department coin, you're the first recipients of this coin. So this is our coin from the Albany Fire Department, and it says, "Thank you for your service to our community." And we truly appreciate what you did, and before I give you the coin, I just want to point out that Martin Moore is actually here with us tonight. And if Martin, if you would stand up, he's with his wife and his 14-year-old son. And if it was not for the heroics of these two individuals, he would not be with us today. So we are so extremely grateful, as I'm sure he and his family are. So with that, I wanted to say thank you very much.
I actually...
All right, anyone want to speak?
I would love to say something, like voice to carry somebody in my... Just, Mark wanted to hear it, and keep my... You move between the tight hand up. What happened that day was just so strange. So I get delayed getting coffee, I stop and get gas, so I'm a little delayed getting home, back up to Bank of Washington where I live, and as you said, traffic came to just complete stop on I-5 there. I may have been at a friend's bachelor party down at the coast, we're just sitting there and it just threw me off because all the... Which is weird, I'm used to vehicles moving to the side when there's an emergency, but not the cars stopped in front of you. I'm like, what the heck? And then all of a sudden, there's a white truck just like mine rolling backwards at me. I'm like, don't hit my nice trucks. And I look over and I see Martin laying back like this in his vehicle, and I sell insurance for a living, and of course, my instinct is like, oh my God, this guy's passed out. I didn't want to hit somebody, so I'm in a lot less clothes than board shorts and flip-flops, and I just run out of my truck and I start running after a car rolling down the freeway. And of course, just as I get to the handle, he does hit somebody. I'm like, ugh, accident, damn it. And I open the door and Martin's just laying back like that, and I'm like, I just go, sir, sir! Wouldn't respond, I shake him, and there's nothing, and that's why I ran down, I could tell that things weren't right. I put my hand on his chest and he was dead. And I just, Steve, I pull him out. We laid him down on the ground, and I started giving him, even though I hadn't been sparring in a long time, and thank God. You came along. I'm a nurse, and she got started with the CPR. She was going, we're doing that, the part that got me was, you know, we got his wallet, I didn't know who he was, and I'm looking in his vehicle, and I will say right now, after we do just a little funny note, I saw a lot of cigarette butts, I'm glad I did not smell cigarettes on you anymore. And, you know, this chaos is going, it felt like an hour, believe it or not, it was only eight minutes by the time you guys arrived, so thank you for that.
He's going back. The residents are happy.
But the part of me, I'm telling you, and I look in his vehicle, I'm trying to figure who this guy is, you know, what medicines, what's going on, who is this person? I had another crazy thing happen with me with a young person that did not make it. And I look in the back of his truck, and he's fishing poles, and I'm like, oh my God, this guy, he's coming back from a fishing trip, he's going home to family, he is not from home. I, he was gone, you guys. You're not, I thought you were, when you woke, I thought you were around 75 years old at that point. And he's not, he's only a few years older than you. And I just was, it was so hard, thank God for you, there was another police officer came in, because she was getting tired, I was getting started, again, the powers that be came along and kept you going, but I am so thankful you're alive. I did not think you were going to make it. I'm just glad, I was there, I'm glad I go to the gym so I could pick you up like you were. I will, and I just want to say I'm thankful that whatever puts that in the stomach, it's helped all of us now that you all do because you're fires. I can't believe we get to do this all the time, but I just am thankful that I could just knew to come and get you, and I'm glad you're alive, it's for your wife and your son, so thank you guys, and this, I did not want this, Sammy coffee, I was like, no! I didn't do it for this, I just did because I wanted you to be around, so thank you.
I would just add that, I was just, I felt the same way, I was like, oh, I know I don't think it's going to be a good outcome, I was very told it would be, but I was so thrilled when I got the phone call from Sammy that you were with us and that everything was okay. And I then, I got the initial phone call, and then I got another message that you work home with your family, which was just a great relief. And I think I would add that just for everyone here, like, I mean, I'm in the medical field every single day and have now become such a true believer in CPR more than I ever have ever been in my life. And so I think just encouraging that and spreading that, that it is true, early intervention really does save lives, I think that that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you very much. And how very true, early intervention is what we count on, is what we rely on. Somebody's got to get their first eight minutes. Eight minutes, if you waited eight minutes for us, you would not be with us today, unfortunately. So we're so happy for that outcome. Okay, we have another heroic individual in the audience tonight. If I could have retired Chief Navy Officer Charles Zietler come forward. Okay, so just a couple days, actually three, I guess, or four, four days after that event, at about 1:00 in the morning, again, on I-5, commonplace with these two incidents, on I-5, traveling southbound. You were going southbound, yeah? Traveling southbound was Charles Zietler in his, or on his motorcycle, and at about that same time, there was a semi-truck that was coming through Albany going northbound, and there was an event, there was a situation that happened, and the semi-truck hit the Highway 20 overpass and it burst into flames. We get called out, but again, it's going to take us time to get there because we're not there, he was there. So traveling southbound, he stopped his motorcycle, got out, crossed the median, as I've been told, started hearing somebody yelling to get them out of there, get them out of there. He ended up going to the cab of the truck, and that was on fire, and there was a driver inside who's...
There was no cab left.
There was no cab left.
All of a sudden, there was a metal fork van and a metal seat.
Oh, wow.
And the seats all began and the seats all had to roll.
So he then, Charles then grabbed him, pulled him to safety, pulled him away from the flames, pulled him across the northbound I-5 lanes and into the median where he waited for us to come. We then transported the driver of that semi-truck to the hospital who suffered burns, and then also transported Mr. Zietler, or Zeitler, to the hospital as well for some smoke inhalation. But because he took the time and he took the risk and he performed heroically, that individual, as he told me before the meeting today, flew home from the hospital in Portland to Riverside, California, where he is now back residing with his family. So with that, I too want to present you with our Life Saving Customer Service coin that says on it how much we appreciate your service to our community. So thank you very much. And again, I'll ask you, anything you'd like to say?
It was a miracle that I was there, but what he didn't say is about two minutes after I got him into the median, the fuel tanks blew. And the fire, the fire department can vouch for this, the fire was so hot that the concrete was burning. So if I hadn't got him out of there, he wouldn't have made it. As it was, he has burns on about 25 to 30% of his body. He's three, he was three weeks, three and a half weeks ahead of his recovery. I've gone up to visit him three times in the hospital, and it's just a blessing to see him now living and healing and back home with his family. But we're now friends for life, so.
All right, well, three heroes in our myths, and we certainly appreciate what each one of you did. Thank you very much.
Wow, that is just amazing. I do believe it was just on the news, Portland news, about, you know, you and him recovering up there at the burn center, but yeah, wow, just real heroic, so we really, really want to commend you and thank you, thank you for your service, and thank you also, and for taking your time too, for coming down, so we can be able to hear your story and be able to personally thank you, you know, for all you did, for helping save those lives, so yeah, so, well, thank you so much, but yeah. And did you want to say anything about your experience then?
I'd just like to say that when something like this happens to you, it really restores your faith in humanity and makes all the things that are going on seem very irrelevant. I never was able to see the people helping me, I blacked out, I was getting a drug-induced coma for four days at the hospital, but I came out alive and kicking, and they didn't think I was going to come back mentally alive and kicking because of the length of time that it took me to get to the hospital and that I got CPR and all of that. So kudos to Corvallis Hospital as well, some very competent people there, worked on me very diligently, and it just feels great to have a second chance.
Oh, that's wonderful. Yeah, all right, well, thank you. Did you want to say a few words, sure? Okay. I mean, it would be very emotional, so yeah, my heart goes out to you, and I just commend you, commend you for that service, and yeah, so, and doing the CPR, I mean, he's very fortunate that you were there, knew what to do, so yeah, thank you. Okay, all right, we have another presentation this evening, and this one's for the Government Finance Officers Association Award, and Stewart, did you want to lead in that? Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Drive home safely.
Thank you, Mayor, and maybe as people are exiting, I'll just give a brief introduction of our GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association liaison that is attending our meeting tonight, Jeff White from Marion County, representing the Oregon Government Finance Officers Association and the National Association, and presentation of awards for our budget presentation and also the financial reports that are put together, so introduce Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor Canopa and members of the City of Albany City Council, thank you for this opportunity to be here. I know this might be a little routine, I think the city continues to win these awards every year, but it's worth recognizing, so I will take a few moments to do that. I'm here tonight as a member of the Board of Directors for the Oregon Government Finance Officers Association, which is a chapter of the National Government Finance Officers Association. The Oregon Government Finance Officers Association, or OGFOA, maintains a membership of approximately 500 members from counties, cities, school districts, special districts, or other governmental entities, along with partners from associated businesses such as banks, software companies, attorneys and bond underwriters. The organization was instituted to promote professionalism and excellence in public financial management through a commitment to four primary goals: fostering individual professional growth for government finance professionals, advancing the government finance profession, furthering standards and policies for the benefit of our communities and our members, and monitoring and reviewing legislative and judicial activities as they relate to our membership. OGFOA works towards those goals through providing training opportunities, both at semi-annual conferences and via webinars, and local training opportunities, by providing a committee structure for our members to participate in and address particular topics of interest, and through an individual professional certification program. I'm sure you're aware, Ms. Ann Baker is a former board member and a former president, past president of OGFOA. My specific role on the OGFOA board this year is to fill the position of the National Government Finance Officers representative to handle these award presentations. GFOA itself was founded in 1906 and represents public finance officials throughout the United States and Canada with an association membership of over 18,000. The GFOA's mission is to enhance and promote the professional management of government finance resources by identifying, developing, and advancing fiscal strategies, policies, and practices for the public benefit. To meet the needs of its many members, the organization provides best practice, guidance, consulting, networking opportunities, recognition programs such as these we'll be talking about tonight, and training opportunities for those of you in the profession. Tonight, I'm specifically here to award, to present three awards that have been achieved by the City of Albany through the recognition programs that exist through, sponsored by GFOA. First, I want to talk about the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The GFOA established the Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program in 1984 to encourage and assist state and local governments to prepare budget documents of the very highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on state and local budgeting and the GFOA's best practices on budgeting. Your budget document was reviewed by selected reviewers who are either members of the professional staff of GFOA or outside reviewers with experience in public sector budgeting. Receiving this award is not an easy task, and I want to share with you just a few of the requirements to receive the award. Three separate reviewers must agree that your budget document met the specific criteria to demonstrate that the City of Albany's budget is transparent, effective, useful, organized, and informative. There are 90 different criteria that are evaluated, of which 51 are mandatory. Of those that are not mandatory, reviewers would expect that many would be included in order to pass for the certificate. Just a couple examples of the mandatory requirements. The document must include a budget message that articulates priorities and issues for the upcoming year. The message must describe significant changes in priorities from the current year and explain the factors that led to those changes. The document should include a coherent statement of entity-wide, long-term financial policies. The document must describe major revenue sources, explain the underlying assumptions for the revenue estimates, and discuss significant revenue trends. The document shall also include financial data on current debt obligations, describe the relationship between current debt levels and legal debt limits, and explain the effects of existing debt levels on current operations. Clearly, to achieve recognition, your budget document cannot just be an Excel spreadsheet. It takes some work and some dedication to make it look and appear very transparent for the citizens of the City of Albany. In Oregon, there are only 60 government entities, of which 32 are cities, that achieve this recognition for their budget document. It's not very many considering the number of entities that are involved here. This is also the 26th consecutive year that the City of Albany has received this award. This is the eighth longest streak among cities in the state of Oregon, and it demonstrates that the City of Albany was one of the early adopters of this GFOA budget award program. It takes the combined effort of the mayor, city councilors, the budget committee, the city manager, the finance staff, and other city department staff to win this award, and you and the citizens of the City of Albany should be proud of this achievement. So I'd like to recognize Ann Baker for her efforts in this, achieving this award for In addition to the budget award recognition, the City of Albany, for the fifth year in a row, has received the GFOA Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting. The GFOA established the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Awards Program, or the CAFRA Program, in 1991 to encourage and assist state and local governments to extract information from their comprehensive annual financial report to produce high-quality, popular annual financial reports. So I'm sure you're familiar with the CAFRA, that big thing that really nobody wants to read. Taking that and converting it into a document that citizens are apt to read and can understand, it does take some work, especially when you're talking about a bunch of accountants who maybe like that CAFRA report. There are only 362 organizations in the entire U.S. and Canada that receive this award this year. In Oregon, there are only eight, and only three of this, only three of them have received the award more times than the City of Albany. So once again, a newer program, and City of Albany is leading the way on that one. Achieving this award is not an easy task either. Eligible reports are reviewed by four judges who complete an evaluation form specifically designed for this purpose. Their evaluation comprises five categories with varying weights of importance: reader appeal, understandability, distribution method, and creativity and notable achievements. The remaining portion of the score is based upon overall quality and usefulness of the report, taking into consideration the four previous categories. Judges are not selected from the same state as the recipient of the award, and they are independent of anyone who audited the CAFRA. So again, congratulations to the City of Albany for creating a transparent financial reporting process to help the citizens of your city have access to your important financial information. And once again, this would be Ann Baker that we're recognizing for this. Finally, the City of Albany cleaned up with a third award for your audit and financial statements. The Certificative Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, or the CAFRA Program, was established in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report that evidences the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. I say this one for last because in my opinion, it is the most difficult award to achieve. The checklist that's used to ensure that your document meets the GFOA requirements is 72 pages long. It has over 620 items to be addressed. Of those 620 items, there are 40 specific items that are mandatory, and if any one of them is not appropriately presented in your financial statements, can potentially disqualify the entire word for the report. That's a pretty tough standard. Again, in Oregon, there were 115 total recipients of this award, only 39 were cities. That puts Albany in about a category of 16% of all cities in Oregon that received this CAFRA award. This is the 33rd consecutive year that the City of Albany has received this recognition. In all of Oregon, there are only 12 recipients with a longer tenure of receiving this award. Again, pretty impressive for the city. I'm going to stumble on Gina Jaeger's name here because we kept talking about the different ways to pronounce it, but she's the one who's going to be recognized for receiving this Finally, just one last statistic, the City of Albany is only one of six entities in the entire state of Oregon to receive all three of these awards. Amazing job, very well done. And again, I want to reiterate, as the chief financial officer for Marion County, I know what it takes to do these things, and we don't get all three of them. The recognition should include all the finance department staff, Stuart Taylor, who directs their efforts, other city staff who help pull that information together for the finance professionals, Mr. Trotson is the city manager, Mayor Canopa, members of the city council and budget committees who all work together to provide an environment of excellence here in the City of Albany. I would say the citizens of Albany should be very proud of your financial success, and congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do think Stuart has been very essential in making sure that everything is checked off in that long, long list, but he's been a great finance director, and unfortunately, he says he's going to retire, and we'd still like to keep him around, but he's kind of persistent that he's going to retire. But with that, thank you also, Stuart, in making sure that we do get this award for all these years, and for the quality of the staff that you have trained to. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, that's it for special presentations. Next, we have a public hearing. This is our Community Development Block Grant 2016 Annual Report. This is on page two, and with that, at 7:42 PM, I will call the, open the public hearing. And Ann?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Ann Catlin, I'm a planner in the Community Development Department, and I get to manage our Community Development Block program. This is a program where the city receives a formula grant annually from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and every year, we have to prepare a plan and how we're going to spend that money, and every five years, we have to prepare a strategic plan that outlines a more long-term approach to what we're going to do. So tonight, I'm going to share with you some highlights of what we achieved in the most recent year, which is the federal 2016 program year corresponding to our fiscal year 1617. And there's, this is in the report, it's included in your packet, and any questions that you may have, I will be able to answer those. And then this is also an opportunity to hear comments from residents or from you about future needs that could be met with this program. With that, I thought I would just give a little overview about the goals of the program. This program's purpose is to develop viable urban communities throughout the country with three primary objectives: decent housing, which includes improving, retaining, and adding affordable housing, reducing homelessness and housing homeless people, suitable living environments, a fairly broad category, things such as improving access to public facilities, safety and livability in neighborhoods, and removing blinding influences in communities. And then expanding economic opportunities, sort of self-explanatory, but helping people with job skills, training, offering them courses for free so they learn how to get into business, et cetera, and adding jobs to our community. And we are required to spend at least 70% of the funds on low and moderate income residents, which are those that earn 80% or less of our area median income, and so we have been doing that. So I thought I would go over some of what we did last year, but also compare that to where we are with our projections for what we might accomplish over five years, and this is trying to explain the table that's in page three of your packet, I think, it's on page two of the report, but Excel... But accessibility is one of the city's goals, and we had predicted that we would have a fairly aggressive curb ramp program. Several years ago, this was a hot priority, and we had staff developing a plan. But in meeting with the community residents in different areas, primarily our low-income neighborhoods, we heard about safe routes to school and some other needs. So we have been using the money to do stuff other than curb ramps. So we did complete an infill sidewalk and curb ramp project in the Sunrise neighborhood on 19th Avenue, which is a safe route to a couple of schools, actually. And that included six curb ramps. But we had projected for five years that we would do 50, and we're a little behind on that. But we've done other things to address accessibility. We had a periwinkle path project a couple of years ago that helped keep that path open. And then we'll be doing a few curb ramps along the Dave Clark Path. So we'll need to amend our five-year plan to adjust that goal. But, you know, it's okay that we are not meeting it, but we tried. So another area is affordable housing, and the city has tried to maintain and retain existing affordable housing through housing rehabilitation. We started off with a single-family housing rehabilitation partnership with Community Services Consortium, and are continuing that. And then we are also going to be partnering with Lamont New York Housing Services this year. So you'll see that we had a goal of, we've done four houses this past fiscal year. We've completed a total of nine single-family homes out of a goal of 20. And I hope that this year, we've got a couple of projects in works, and having two slightly different programs that we might achieve the 20, single-family. And then there was a goal of 20 multifamily units, and we completed 11 rehabs on 11 units this past year. And I don't expect that we will do any in this last year. So we're in our fourth year, or we just finished our fourth year last year. It's this year coming up that we're currently in. Expanded economic opportunities. We started off with a strong partnership with Lynn Benton Community College's Small Business Development Center. We are still working with them on a couple of programs. They provide courses to residents that want to explore going into business, as well as business management courses for small businesses already in business. And they also do one-on-one advising. So they offer quite a spectrum of services to keep and grow jobs in our community. And these funds help provide those courses and services for free or low cost to our low-income residents. But we have projected that we would serve about 150 businesses with that program. And to date, we've served 90, but we've changed our performance measure to serving people and not just businesses because some people are not in business yet. So we've actually served 99 residents with those services. And then jobs created because of these specific services, we are at 28 out of 40. And the city started a small-business grant program to help new businesses launch their business and grow their business with the goal that they would add jobs. And this past year, we gave two grants out. Another big goal of this program and of the federal government is to reduce homelessness. This past year, and for actually all consecutive years, we've been awarding funds to Jackson Street Youth Shelter to help them acquire the Albany Youth Shelter and do outreach to our at-risk youth, primarily in middle school and high school. And the shelter has been very busy and popular and full year-round now. They serve 25 Albany youths with, of course, overnight shelter, but also case management, wraparound services to help these youth reconnect with their families or live sustainably on their own. So in our five-year plan, we projected serving 50 residents with overnight shelter and preventing homelessness. And we had a projection to try to add to our shelter capacity 20 beds. And this year, we served, the 25 people got us up to 81. So we're past our mark of serving residents and trying to prevent them from being homeless. We, a couple of years ago, added 16 shelters and transitional beds with partnerships with, well, with the Youth Shelter, as well as Albany Helping Hands. So I don't anticipate, well, we don't have that in our next year. So we are a little under what we had expected to do, but we haven't had requests for funding either for this demand. So we have met the demand in our community for that expansion. Most of our partnerships are with a lot of our public service agencies and other public agencies in the community, and most of them are working towards homeless prevention. We, the city granted three, well, four agencies funding, and three are reported here. One's already been reported. Infant abuse prevention has been strongly supported. The Family Tree Relief Nursery served 37 residents this past year, and the goal of their program is to work with at-risk families to prevent abuse, but then to prevent foster care placements. Then the Albany Helping Hands Shelter received funding to hire an employment coordinator to work with some of their long-term homeless residents and try to get them back into the work world, working with them on their resumes and job skills and things like that. And then Youth Build worked with eight young adults from Albany this past year, helping them get GEDs and job skills. So overall, we hope to serve 500 residents over the five-year period, and we're well underway to that. Then removing blighting influences is sort of broad, and we've chosen to look at that with a lens of improving some of our public facilities that were fairly dated and vandalized. And one of those is Sunrise Park, and I mentioned Periwinkle Path earlier. But we have been working on this project for some time. We have all the approvals we need, and now we're getting ready to go out to bid in a very busy construction season. So we'll see how that goes. But here is a picture of that plan. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of the income levels of the residents that we've served. 65 percent are extremely low-income. That's 30 percent below our median family income. So that's, you know, $10,000, $12,000. It's not a lot of income, and it varies on household size. Then 23 percent were between 31 and 50 percent. And then 13 percent were between 51 and 80 percent of our area median income. So as I mentioned, the opportunity tonight is to hear from you and to hear from the community about needs that could be addressed. We're getting ready to develop our next five-year plan. This is a great time to hear about programs and needs that we can and hope to accomplish over the next five years, as well as our performance and questions about our current programs that we offer and how we might do things better. Thank you.
Any questions of Ann?
Sure. Over the years, you've had a very solid relationship with Community Services Consortium. But I believe a couple of years ago, they kind of split apart in different sections, and some of it went up to Polk County that is controlling some of it. And Lynn and Benton County shifted apart in different portions of the type of work they do. Has any of that affected any of the kind of work that CBDG is working with or through Community Services Consortium?
No. Our partnership with Community Services Consortium is strong. It's primarily in housing rehabilitation. The program has changed a little bit, where we were doing loans, and there was a drop in demand. The market wasn't there for loans. I think when you're low-income, you're worried about taking on any debt, even though you don't have to repay it until you move out of the house or it sells. But we switched to a grant program that is being offered in combination with weatherization services. So you need to have the weatherization piece in order to be eligible. But they have a long list of need. I think it's just taking time to get through the list and serve Albany residents. So they were a little behind, so they didn't ask for funding the last couple of years, and we're almost finished spending the money that we've given to them over the course of the program. But they will receive funds to continue that, what we are calling a central repairs grant program. But what CSC is doing for us and for the community, which I forgot to mention in the slides, is fair housing outreach and education. Fair housing and civil rights are really big issues with federal funding and ensuring that we try to remove discrimination and train people to know when they might be discriminating against a tenant, for example, and to reach out and solve some of those issues. So they have really taken that role very strongly, and they're really the primary provider in our area of services related to investigation and calls. So things are going well, and glad to have them as a partner.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of Ann? All right. Thank you, Ann. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the Community Development Block Grant report? Okay, all right. Not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:55 PM. Council, if there isn't any other questions on page two, staff would need to have a motion to authorize staff to submit the report to HUD.
Salute.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I have one.
Uh huh.
And I should have asked Ann when she was up there. I noticed that there was like a half a million dollar carryover, and I just wondered, is there not, is it just the timing that you don't have the projects ready you're working on? Or is that, that's a lot of carryover.
It's not all carryover. Well, so we've been receiving funds every year. And in the first year, we actually sort of received two years of funding because we got off to a late start back in, it really was about 2014, but we received 2013 funding. And a big portion of the funds that have not been spent are tied up in the Sunrise Park project. But we expect, I don't think we'll be behind after this year. I think I said that last year, but I really promise this year that we should spend that large pot of money down. But we, I'm not sure if it's about $500,000, but we spent $450,000 this year, which included some of the funds allocated to us in the fiscal year 1617, as well as prior year funds. And I'm still tying up loose ends with projects that just finished this last year. So the way HUD wants us to report it, it's actually the dollar amount you spent by June 30th, not just reimbursement through the city, but that HUD has reimbursed us, and I've requested funding. So they cut that off right on June 30th. So we've actually spent more money, but it's a little confusing because you're dealing with a spectrum of funding. But we can't have more than a certain amount in reserves before we are then docked for not spending it. But I think we're doing okay as long as we get Sunrise Park completed this year.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, Ann. Next is Business from the Public. Is there anyone here that would like to bring an item forward? I know Dr. Goby would like to speak on the downtown parking, but we can have him speak when we get to that item. But is there anyone else for Business from the Public? Okay. Not seeing anybody. Next is Adoption of a Resolution. This is on page 32 to 34. And is this Stuart or Jorge?
The first one is Office 365, that would be me. I provided a high-level introduction during the work session. Basically, we've been, the City of Albany's been using Office 2007 since, for nine years, for the past nine years. We reached a point where the current version of Office has reached the end of life. Microsoft will stop supporting Office 2007 this year. Between August and September of this year, we evaluated a few resellers and requested quotes for replacing or upgrading our system. The Microsoft Office 365 suite of applications can be purchased through multiple resellers, including Microsoft directly. However, purchasing it from Microsoft is not the least expensive option. Staff is recommending the procurement of the Office 365 suite of applications through a reseller by the name of Liftoff, using a class special procurement, and we have a resolution in the DIES. Liftoff has migrated over 300 government entities to Office 365 in 42 states. And if you include the private sector migrations they've done, they've done over 500 of those migrations. This would allow us to not only move to Word, Excel, PowerPoint, OneNote, Outlook, Access, but also we'll be upgrading our Exchange server for the mail server. It will provide us an online drive for collaboration, a SharePoint site, and Skype for Business so we can have online meetings and video meetings for city employees. So as you can see, we have four different quotes. I provided a first-year total cost, and if you look at the first-year total cost, Liftoff would be the lowest cost. If we extrapolated at three years, Liftoff would be the second-lowest cost. However, when we talk about experience and what can be provided out of this purchase, Liftoff will provide us some support and guidance in terms of the implementation, where the others are just having the cost on the first implementation part, and they don't provide the support later on. So I provided the costs of licenses for 450 licenses, which includes, we have about 425 FTEs, but we have also temp account for temp employees that work throughout the city. So that would be the total of, over three years, the total cost is going to be $275,000. But this year, we have the budget $91,800. And every year, we'll be adding the same amount to continue to be able to support this application.
This is in the budget?
It is in the budget, yeah.
Okay. As Jorge stated, what was handed out on a separate, was the resolution on that second page there. But is there other questions? Okay. What would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, Jorge.
Thank you.
Next is Amending the Parking Restrictions Within the Area of Downtown Albany. And this would be over on Kalapuya, on the backside of the post office. And we had this item on Monday. That was a discussion. And there is also a resolution that's handed out on the DIES. And Ron, did you want to do a report first or not?
Nope. Must be fun.
That looks like a no.
Let me get home to eat.
I was hoping to hide in the back. At the work session, we did present a list of pros and cons, or a few options there. I know there are a couple of council members that weren't at the work session, so I brought a few extra copies. And if you want me to kind of pass those around to assist your discussion, I can do that, but I didn't have a formal presentation prepared.
Okay. And I noticed the resolution that you had, you put three-hour customer-only. You didn't put employee permit parking slash the two-kind?
The direction received at the work session was just three-hour customer parking. I did have conversations with Lisa at Parkwise. They have the ability to issue special permits if they wanted to.
Okay.
If you would prefer changing it to employee permit as well, we could do that, too. There's different ways to accomplish the same thing.
Okay. Ann, but as long as Lisa is able to do that?
It would just have to be signed to match whatever.
What do you mean?
Signs would be the left.
Oh, your signs.
They need to.
Okay. All right. Okay, questions of Ron? So Ray and Mike, you were not there on Monday's discussion. So are you?
Well, I did have a question after doing some reading and talking, so.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I guess, was there any discussion that I missed because I had a pending medical procedure that precluded me from being at the meeting that would allow for customers, or not customers, but employees of businesses that are currently using some of that area or where they were going to be parking? Or was that even part of the discussion? or where they were going to be parking, or was that even part of the discussion at all?
There was, of the three options that were looked at, one of the, one of the impacts of switching to three hour customer along Cala Puya is that we will be pushing some of the employees that park there today out into the neighborhood that surrounds it. That's one of the side effects. There was some discussion at the meeting that because we, with the Streetscape project, added parking to that block, on the side of the street, you're, you're, the, the subsequent to the resolution, today has 19 spaces and before the Streetscape project had eight. We've added 11 spaces to that block. So, there, there was some discussion, is it, is it possible to essentially have two different parking regulations on different pieces of that block? For instance, have employee parking on the south half and customer parking on the north half. It's possible to post it that way, but we're unsure of, because it's back end diagonal parking, how effective that would be, as opposed to having just one, one regulation that covers the whole block. If we split it in the middle, it may be a little bit difficult for people going there to figure out just where that break is when they're backing into the space and not pulling the door.
Thank you.
Rich?
That was after, after I thought, said that, yeah, this is a good idea, I'm good with it. It was brought to my attention that this, in fact, on second, it's all 30 minute, and so it does shut people out. I would be in favor of splitting it. And, reason being, I mean, we had eight there before, and, I mean, if, if you split it up, so, I mean, we're looking for, kind of looking for 12 spots. We don't look for 12 spots for anybody else, but, you know, put the blinders on and if we took the 19 into 10 and 9, or something like that, so, or 8 and 11, we would still serve the people that were there before. And, it's my opinion, I don't have any proof or anything, but, that people would, in a very short period of time, the people who are the ones who would come over from the volunteers and the folks who are in the area would recognize in a very short period of time, that it is in fact split. And, they would be able to go back to their quote, "old ways," and it would lessen the impact for the entire group, allowing people to have parking for the three hours that they need, and then having other people who are used to parking over there have that space too, so.
And, and that's where, we didn't talk a lot on Monday about Second Avenue, but Second Avenue, you know, Mike and Ray, is all 30 minutes. So, we created, I believe it was eight exist, six existing, we created eight more spaces there. So, now they're all 30, 30 minute, and they're hardly used. So, so it could be done as taking the newly created ones and make them as three hour or an all day customer too. And in that way, all of the existing spaces would be the same for employees or whoever parked there before.
I think that's a better choice.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And so, I mean, that could be added to the resolution too, we could just mention Second Street on that. Other questions? I, I do want to let Dr. Goby speak too, so, but Dick, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. Richard is that we do provide as many employee spots for the post office people there as they've had before. Because, this morning, as I was feeding about 50 ducks that invaded the canal next to my house, and I was trying to settle some of their ash, the post lady came by and pointed out that.
Not near full.
They work some kind of late hours, and she said oftentimes, she's not done until 8:30. And, they'd rather park someplace close and not have to go down into Bryant Park or something like that to get to their cars. And, so, I think that, that, that's a good idea. Another question she had is, I hear that you're talking about having paid spots for people. Now, we haven't talked about having any paid parking on the street, have we?
That Lisa can address, I do want to come forward, Lisa, thank you.
If we, excuse me, Lisa Grotto, Executive Director, Albany Downtown Association. If we do employee permit parking, that is a paid opportunity. Those folks can park anywhere that that sign is flagged anywhere throughout downtown, and so could people who have already bought those permits, so they could park in these new parking spaces as an opportunity.
So, then, we're presently doing that?
Not on this particular street, but throughout downtown, yes.
Oh, okay.
The other opportunity that was presented was leased parking. We do that in a lot, behind the J.C. Penney Building, behind Cellar Cat and Long Water. Those are specifically numbered assigned spaces, and they belong to a business or an individual from 9 to 4, Monday through Friday, and are available to the public any hours outside of that, or any other person that wants to use it, employee.
That doesn't do the post office employees much good.
No.
But, the employees have a big, large parking lot already.
Well, it's, according to her, it's not nearly big enough.
And, and if you look at, I think I brought up the one map that Ron had handed out the other day, or on Monday, and I don't know if I ended up bringing that, it pretty much showed during the daytime, that lot was 75% empty during the day, because what they do is, it's empty when the, you know, the carriers come out and they leave them empty. Well, they could switch employee vehicles during the day and kind of still utilize it.
They would, they would have to move their vehicle during the day though.
Mm-hmm.
Because, people come in and park, and then they go in and load the, load the vehi, the mail vehicles, and then the mail vehicles leave, and then there are the empty spots, but by then, everybody is already parked.
Yeah, I got, I did find the maps. Did you have other questions, Dick?
Well, if Richard's going to make a motion of that effect, I might be prepared to second.
When do we get the call? Can you say anything before you guys go?
Yep, just a, yeah, we will. So, I just, looking at this item here, there is 33 spaces at the post office that are empty in, on their site during the day.
Empty all day.
Not usable though.
33 spaces, empty all day.
That's what shows on this map.
Well, what time of day was that map?
Well, there's no carriers there, so it's got to be during the day.
But, then if they parked there, then when the, when the vehicles came back, they would then be putting, sitting in, in places the vehicles would be parked normally.
Yeah, you can't, you can't park in places where you're working.
A lot of businesses have to juggle parking, so, yeah. I think Bill's got a question.
So, also for Lisa, I think during our work session Monday, if I remember correctly, you were going to try and reach out to the post office. Did you or anybody else in the last two days have a chance to reach out to them?
I have not had contact with the post office this time.
And staff or May or anybody?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, but any other questions, counsel? We'll let folks speak. Okay, oh, Ron?
One last comment. If, if at the end of the discussion, you start leaning towards splitting the parking on one block, whether it be Cala Puya or Second, my advice would be to not include that block in the resolution tonight. And, the reason is, we, I don't know exactly where we could put the signs to create the split, so it would be difficult to say, for instance, the eight south, eight south spaces are not, if we can't get a sign there. So, I'd like to, if you decide you want to split them, I'd like perhaps some idea of what the ratio would be, we could come back to it your very next work session with a new resolution for that block, so we made sure we could assign in the right space and have the, the resolution reflect the right number of spaces.
So, the resolution could be for Cala Puya tonight, but not in Second later.
If, if you wanted, yeah, you could do, if you wanted to keep the three hour on Cala Puya and assign employee spaces, permit spaces to Second, we could come back with a resolution for Second.
Yeah, okay, all right. Dr. Goby?
Oh, may I, may I say something? I really think that we should put this off. I don't think there's been enough research done, enough talking to the post office, you know, other than, no one else in the whole downtown community has a say in where, where the parking was and stuff, you know, as far as employee leasing and employee permits and stuff like that. So, post office has had free parking there. But, I don't think, I don't think we've had enough discussion on this. I think we need to find out a little bit more before we rush to something, because Carousel hasn't really had a chance to say anything, downtown hasn't, you know, not a lot, and so, I don't think it would hurt if we put it off for just a little bit, but it's just my opinion.
And I'm happy to clarify anything that counsel would like, as far as the difference between the different designations and how that works. I'll be in the room.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Dr. Goby? And Stephen Reynolds? So, you'll need to state your name and spell your last name and your address, please.
Gary Goby, 1767 Cascade Heights, Albany.
Steve Reynolds, volunteer IT for the Carousel, 1700 Northwest Lincoln, North Albany.
So, I appreciate the counsel giving us a chance to sort of update you about what's going on with Carousel, so you can use the weight of what's happened there to kind of help you realize of this decisions regarding parking, which seems to always be difficult to honor everybody's needs. We've been open now 32 days. We've had 33,550 riders on the Carousel, which did not include 11,000 people that did not ride the Carousel. Forty, forty, four thousand people at the end of First Street. Our organization is volunteer run, and I was very few hired employees. So, the volunteers work three hour shifts. We have 24 volunteers a day, which means we have 4,500 volunteers a year. And so, where they park is kind of important, because we would like to tell people who come down there and give their time to running this fantastic facility, where they can park this route. So, we were, we've been trying to get information about who are our customers, so you kind of know the numbers, but we have a sign in book, so we sampled 22 days of the sign in book. That was 2,500 people. 72% of them were local, which means Albany-Corvallis in Lebanon. 9% were out of town, 16% were out of state, and 50 were out of country. So, well, yes, we had Eclipse or something like that, so, yes, that's a startup flesh and a good, good news for us. So, I did a personal zip code for two hours at the front door. I couldn't sample the side door because I was only one place at a time. So, in two hours, we had 271 customers come in. This was last week, last Sunday. 58% were from Albany-Lebanon-Corvallis, 24% were out of town, 17% were out of state, and two were out of country in two hours. So, we've had a lot of customers. We've had a lot of activity and haven't really done any specific advertising other than opening our doors. This December, there will be a billboard at 1.1 miles from the first Albany exit on Southbound I-5. We expect that that will make a lot of difference in what happens this winter. We have had a tremendous request for rentals. We have, this, this is the number of tours and rentals that have been scheduled through December. All right, it doesn't include requests, it includes the ones that are scheduled. All right? So, we have a lot of volunteer cards, comment cards, volunteers, I want to sign out, I want to part of this, this sort of dress, this sort of mailing list, put this on your newsletter. We do have a newsletter. So, tremendous, tremendous number, tremendous amount of interest from the community and from a lot of other places, surprisingly distant places. Steve's going to give you some more information about analytics and of all that. So, in five weeks, income wise, we've put $109,000 in the bank in five weeks. We have a big business. We have a big business. And, so we're transitioning the board from a board that was running an art project and a hopeful building to now running a business. So, we've, we've had a tremendous response from the community and seasoned board members, experienced business people to join our board and to help us manage all this. We have no specific web promotion, promotions, we have no specific advertising campaigns yet, and other than the billboard coming up, you know, and a little social media, I don't know what's going to happen when we get our act together. It's, it's a big deal. So, city planners have been right on us, in that the Albany Carousel is a downtown anchor, and we thank you for supporting that effort. Steve's got some more information for you.
So, we thought it would be good to give you some metrics, so that you could actually see kind of what it's doing. Dr. Goby's kind of handling the brick and mortar side, I said I would do the digital I handed out a sheet to you. This is a snapshot of the Google Analytics for the Carousel. This is for August. Basically, you're looking at 12,587 sessions for the month. That means that it was used 12,000, 12,587 times during the month. 9,026 users, that's the total number of people that used it for the month, both returning and new users. And then we have exceptional number of page views, 78,000 page views. That means people are going through all the animals, they're going through every page that they can find. People are looking at average about 6.21 pages per session that they're looking at it. They're staying on the site for 2.39 minutes. The bounce rate, which is really important, is so astronomically good here, 0.63%. That means almost 99.5% of the people that are looking for the website are staying on the website. And then, 66.89% of the new sessions just means that, that's somebody that's coming back and looking back on and starting up again and looking at the, at the site. As you can see at the bottom, I kind of broke this first page, just giving overview, this is the cities that we're, that we're seeing that are coming in. Some of the things are amazing, I mean, you know, you're reaching out to Seattle, you're reaching out Portland, Portland's huge, see a lot of, a lot of Portland coming in, Corvallis. Yeah, a lot of Corvallis. So, kind of wanted to give you an overview of the web, of just kind of our web analytics. We monitor this quite a bit, because it really tells us, you know, what the traffic looks like, where they're coming, and it does mirror a lot of what you're seeing on the brick and mortar side. Preise, you could just kind of hand out that first package here. What I did was, we launched the events module of the site about five days before the grand opening, and this is just a printout of the people that have sent in requests that want to pay money to book the Carousel. Probably a lot of people in there you know, you know, a lot of, a lot of birthday parties, a lot of, you know, everything, a lot of corporate, a lot of everything, so, just kind of give you an idea. And, the girls over there and, and all the volunteers, everybody, they're working really hard to try to accommodate everybody, but they're definitely getting their feet under their, you know, under themselves and trying to figure out, you know, how do you do all of this? The second, the second one that she's going to hand out, we-
The second, the second one that she's going to hand out, we started collecting our emails. So, we've already collected seven-hundred-and-sixty-four emails for our potential mailing list. So, we can send out a mass email right now to seven-hundred-and-sixty-four people. And we haven't even started going down the newsletter yet. So, if you get a chance, yeah, just take a look and you'll see. There's a lot of people, a lot of people. As far as kind of the future things that we're going to do, especially on the digital side, I mean, obviously, you've heard about the billboard. We've got a big online store that's just sitting there. They're having a hard time keeping stuff inside the gift shop right now. I mean, I think they're in the third or fourth order or the fourth? Fourth order. So, they've got a lot of, they've got a lot of demand there. One of the big things we're going to do, live, a live feed. There's a big market out there for live feed. So, we want to run live feed inside, one outside, one, one going down First, First Street, First Avenue. And then, we haven't even started advertising on the site yet. You know, we're getting numbers. We can sell the site. I mean, they're, they're there. We're going to, you know, try to do some cooperations with the downtown businesses. We can offer, you know, you can offer different packages with some of the restaurants and things down there. So, there's a lot of revenues opportunities there for, for the Carousel. Haven't really got into the SEO yet, search engine optimization. So, we really haven't pushed the site out there yet and let everybody know because we're still trying to regulate almost the number of people that are coming in just because, I mean, you try to deal with forty, forty-four thousand people. It's a lot. So, anyway, that's kind of the overview of what we're seeing coming in down there. As far as parking goes, you know, we've heard that River Rhythms doesn't have a problem accommodating eight thousand people. That's once in a while, ongoing, you know, I mean, it's something that we're going to have to visit here because if they do start ramping up, I think you're going to see more demand, especially, you know, when you, if you start booking out. Because they can, they can book out four hundred people down there. If you want to book out the site, especially on a corporate event or something, you want the whole thing, they can accommodate four hundred. So, that doesn't take a lot to use up sites when you're talking only twelve sites. There's parking over there, obviously, and there's a lot of, you know, should we, shouldn't we, and, you know, this and that. So, it's going to be kind of a thing where everybody's going to have to kind of figure it out. But, the Carousel's there and like Dr. Goby said, it's, it's going to be big.
So, our, you know, trying to deal with the influx of large crowds and that sort of thing, those, that's all important to us also. But, I think really what we're, we'd like you to focus on is, is an accommodation to allow us at least to have a few spots where our volunteers who are showing up on a regular basis can have either a paid lease for a spot or a spot designated for them so that they know where they need to go to come in to work for the forum. And if we have three to four hundred people there for a party, they'll figure out where to go. We're not so concerned about that, just like you're not so concerned about having two-thousand at the park. They'll find their spot. But, every day, every day, we have to have dedicated people come in and give their time to make this happen. And that's because whoever wants to do it realizes what's going on. And it's not going to go away, obviously.
Well, this is impressive, so, just wonderful. And actually, even the website, this doesn't even count how much you've had on Facebook.
Yeah, we haven't even, you know, there's, there's a lot of different levels to this. And the more work you put into it, obviously, the more that it returns. Lot of different income levels and a lot of opportunity. I mean, it's a, it's a transition for downtown. It's a transition for Albany. You know, I wanted to, I wanted to kind of point out that part of the comprehensive plan right here, Monteeve Park, you know, back in the day, I think, you know, when our fore-
Forefather before us?
Said that Monteeve River Park is a dream come true for Albany. And, you know, they go on to list, you know, the rewards it wins. And sometimes you forget about that, that, you know, the Oregon Parks Design Awards and some of these other things. And then, you look at all the amenities that are listed, and then at the end, now you put in Now a Carousel. So, you know, it's, it's a big thing.
That's wonderful. Yep, yep. Ray, any questions?
This is a question probably for Dr. Goby, maybe Steve can answer it, I don't know. You mentioned the amount of money that you've already started to generate. Obviously, it's going to find its own level and hopefully, it's going to continue to ramp up. But, at this point in time, do you perceive you're meeting your operations and maintenance, your O and M going forward? Is that going to be an issue down the road to meet that at a, when the traffic comes down?
We, we don't, we don't really seriously think that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, you know what? They're so, they're being so careful over there. They're at forty percent of budget right now. I mean, there's, and they're throttling this thing way back. I mean, they're, they're like worried, oh, we're going to order too much, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I mean, and they gave away all the rides the first day for free.
So, you're, you're, you're on target, meeting your business plan at this point in time?
We're way ahead, we're way ahead on that. We expect to be self-sufficient, without question. You won't have to subsidize that, never. Don't worry about that, Ray.
Continue to work. You just need to tell us where you put the people.
Yeah.
Come down and volunteer, we'll let you map out or something, so.
Yeah, wonderful. Any other questions?
Yes, could I ask you, you had mentioned something about the parking, the parking places and even if you had to pay for this and that. So, would you be willing for, like, your, your people, your volunteers, like the Carousel, do they permit parking for like maybe five?
We would, we would pay for ten, eleven, whatever.
Okay.
Paid, paid employee parking sponsor. That's a value to us.
That gives us, yeah.
That's a value to us, to be able to tell the volunteers, "Look, you can go park over here. You don't have to worry about, you know, getting your ticket today because you don't understand where to park."
Right. And also, then, you wouldn't be more thought of and catered to than other people in town? So, that, I think that would be good for us.
We realize that it has a value to be, to have a stable place, then we're willing to pay for them.
Great.
It's just part of, part of reasonable overhead.
Yeah, because you're rolling in the dough.
We have a lot of people that are sending in there. They're wanting to, they're wanting to send in donations. You see, there's a lot of emails coming in about donations.
Great.
A lot of people want some things, like bricks. We're not really prepared to go down that road yet, but, you know, we told them we'd sell, we sell bricks down First Street, all the way down First Street. Sell bricks.
A six-million-dollar building has significant expense.
You bet.
So, we don't have a handle on quite all that yet, but we're getting it.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Any other questions? And also, a part of having the Carousel pay for those permits is a fairness because other employees, you know, they pay for permits too. So, it's just keeping it, keeping it fair. Yeah, Lisa?
If they want this?
Can you come to Mike, please? Yeah.
If they want designated spaces, those would be leased spots as opposed to employee permits.
Yeah, right.
Just clarification of the difference between the two. The other one, they can park anywhere in town, but it doesn't guarantee that it would be the ones by the Carousel.
I see.
Leased spaces would be designated to where they, and many of the businesses do that, include act theater and things where they share them amongst their employees and they pick them up for that purpose.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Are those, if it's a leased space, when you're, the days that you're closed, then they would be open, not usable, right?
Yeah.
Free-for-all.
It would belong to the Carousel Monday through Friday from nine AM to four PM. If they wanted to come up with some way to share that with another entity, I'd be more than happy to entertain how we could advise and optimize those two days. And they do trainings and other things and they may have a need or expand to more days for the week, once the demand gets there.
Well, my concern is that we, we have a lack of, lack of places to park. And then, we have empty spots because they're quote leased, unquote. And no one else can use them. I mean, it's, it's a similar problem other places.
And on Washington right now, on the other side of the post office, along the, not the post office parking lot, but the opposite side, there's our employee all-day parking spots that are available frequently as I'm driving around because I frequently make sure what we're doing. And the other opportunity would be to do something with those thirty-minute spots as the mayor had brought up and you too, Mr. Collins.
Right. But, these are still three-hour customer only.
Right.
So, when nobody, when the Carousel's closed on Monday, Tuesday, anybody can be parking. It's still a three-hour customer.
That would be not what is in your proposal at this time.
Right. Wasn't it three-hour customer employee permit parking?
Employee permit parking means they have the opportunity, as does any other employee.
Right, to park there.
And they belong to generally an individual. The banks sometimes will buy ten of them, but they belong to ten specific bank employees because that requires a hang tag in the window of the car so that we know that car has paid a permit. So, there would be a real logistic issue if they have hundreds of people trying to share ten tags and how they would hand them back and forth. Or if they're assigned numbers. From the Parkway's perspective, we don't need to manage who's in there. We'll get a phone call because they'll say, "That blue pickup isn't one of our people. Can you get them out of there?" We'll say, "Park anywhere today, we'll take it up, we'll get them out of there."
Yeah.
Does that clarify the question?
Well, so, so I'm not quite clear because the resolution was down as the three-hour customer only plus or, you know, on the same side as the permit parking. So, either or.
That was, yeah, that was the-
So, is that still proposed?
That was one of the three that were brought to the work session.
Right.
And one was moved forward. But, that one doesn't assign specific spaces. That was not the one that was moved forward. But, that sounds like what Dr. Goby was asking for.
Right. So, it'd be the three-hour customer employee permit parking. That way, when it comes to Monday and Tuesday, any customer can park in those spaces.
And any customer could park there, so anybody could park there all the time. It would not necessarily have anything to do with Carousel.
Yeah. Is that what it'll work?
I don't know that it'll work for the volunteers at the Carousel.
Okay.
It's something that we certainly as Parkway's could manage. But, it would not stop other employees from parking there. Anyone could decide, the post office, workers, customers would be parking there.
For the three hours.
For three hours.
Right. And they most likely don't, most of the employees most likely don't use the three-hour spaces, do they?
Employees aren't allowed to park in three-hour parking, but if they have a permit, then they could park there the entire day.
Okay.
But, they could park anywhere.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. And then, I think the lady wanted to speak. Would you like to come forward? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Debbie Myers. I live at sixteen-hundred Walnut Street Southwest. I work at the Albany Post Office and I'm a letter carrier. Been there since nineteen ninety-two, about twenty-five years. We were just living our life at the Albany Post Office, not paying attention to much. And then, they built the Carousel and all of a sudden, we are put in the limelight. Nobody talked to any postmaster. I'm the, I'm the president of our union, National Association of Letter Carriers. And I talk to management quite often. And I've asked every postmaster, because we've had quite a few, have they talked to you? Nobody's talked to us. Nobody's said anything. So, now you come in and you want to take away our parking. And we've got employees, we're not all high-paid employees at the Albany Post Office. We've got brand-new employees that are making very low wages. I mean, low wages compared to what people think the post office pays, which is like sixteen dollars an hour. That's what they're making. And now, they're going to have to start making a parking place, you know, paying for parking. Or, as Dick said, the letter carrier talked to him today and said, "We've got carriers out there probably still delivering mail. We employ probably seventy employees that pay taxes. And you're taking away our parking places for volunteers." And nobody in the post office understands that. We have taken a lot of flak over this Carousel thing because it was, "You guys need to move." And I'm not sure why we need to move. It's a federal building. When you say that the parking lot's empty all day, yes, it is. Because if we let people park in there, which, can't remember what was there before, the people would pull into the parking lot, park, and then you'd come back off your route. And, and even though you guys can't see the numbers, we have assigned parking places because we have routes. And we would get in there and, and it just takes time. You've got to go find the person who's in your parking place. If they opened up that, if they wasn't fenced in, everybody would be parking there. It's a federal building. We aren't moving. And, you know, it's when people say, "Why don't you move to the, the Safeway so that we can have parking for the Carousel?" Well, my question is, why didn't the Carousel move to the old Safeway where there was parking? Why is it all of a sudden that the post office is responsible for what the Carousel did? They didn't talk to any of us? They didn't, I, I mean, all this was just made, there was never parking. Why wasn't that an issue before the Carousel was built? And now, it falls to the post office for some reason? Or, the postal employees that are now going to have to scrounge for parking places, park blocks away. And like I said, what Tammy told him, what his letter carrier told him is the truth. We're all working ten to twelve hours a day. And a quarter of our routes, those people are walking fifteen to, or five to eight miles a day. And now, we have to hike to our cars at the end of the day because some volunteers want parking places. There are a lot other things that could be done, such as, why aren't the volunteers given permits and then they get to park where they want? I, I just don't understand why this all falls to the post office, why Kalapua now is all of a sudden not parking for us. I, I just don't understand it. We're all very discouraged at the post office. Seventy employees that are paying taxes, that come to work every single day and deliver every one of your mail. Everybody here gets mail, at your job and at your house. And we're the ones that are taking the brunt of what the, the decisions that were made without ever asking us anything. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So, Ms. Myers, you know, I totally understand your concern, but, you know, we did, and I actually tried to contact a postmaster, there wasn't any for a while. I mean, you guys had one, one week, and then they were gone the next week.
Exactly.
So, so we did try. But, what's being proposed is really is changing the parking of what was added parking. So, what was before the Carousel, then that is, what's being proposed is that can still stay the same as all day. You know, we're not, you know, an all-day, you know, customers parking. When we built the Carousel, when we had did the streetscape around the post office block, we created thirty-some spaces. That was specifically for the Carousel. But, we can't take public parking, you know, spaces throughout the whole downtown and just, and put up a sign for only one certain business or one certain use. You'd be fair because it is a public, you know, public space. That's where we have the regulations over the timing of those spaces to be able to try to kind of fit the, you know, meet the needs of the whole downtown area. So, so I understand your concern, but what we're proposing here is actually keeping the same spaces you had before we created the new spaces.
So, when you say that, so we were parking on Kalapua up against the fence of the post office, and we were also parking across the street on the street. So, you're counting all of that parking that we had before that was, that we didn't have to pay for, we just got to park there? That's all counted in how many spaces that we were, that you took away or gave or whatever you're saying we did?
Right.
And I'd just like to say also that the post office is also being blamed for the backend parking. It's like, how are we to blame for that? I ask when I, I typed in something on Albany happening, it's like, do you have any control over what goes on in, in the front of your street? I, I mean, we are being blamed literally for everything. Every day when we go out and talk to customers, they're asking us these questions. Like, do we have any say in this?
Yeah. And also, I, you know, I want you to know too, in case people do ask, is, when we looked and informed our urban renewal, you know, district sixteen years ago for revitalizing the downtown, there's always been conversations about, could the post office be a better use? Post offices can go pretty much any, any location. So, so-
And why do you think that?
That was, should look to see, could it be a better use since it's close to the river? Is there something that can be, you know, more higher density there to be able to get more use out of that block?
So, so you think that the post office can just move? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not just saying that. But, there is a process that it can be moved.
Well, I'm going to tell you that-
And it is a cumbersome process.
It is. It's a federal building, that's a lot. And that we just purchased that building probably five years ago, maybe.
Right.
And so, and, you know, the postal service isn't always doing that great. And so, to think that we would just- And so, and, you know, the postal service isn't always doing that great, and so to think that we would just move.
No, there would, there, there could end up being a plan of how that could be done. But we're not there yet. We wanted to be able to see what are we going to be needing for parking for the carousel, and, but that is sort of a, a plan that we are looking at. So, and-
It's just so shocking to me that the carousel has just taken over the, everything that we, you know, everything, because we're across the street from it, it's everything.
Well, and it's all a part of our revitalization plan, and as you know, for over the years, our downtown needed to be revitalized. So, it was pretty blighted, and it didn't have a lot of energy downtown. So, it's been a plan that we've been working on to really bring back the life to the downtown area. So, it's kind of take, and it takes everybody kind of working together so we can be able to make sure that we have the parking for all businesses and to be able to help, you know, each business thrive.
Madam Mayor?
So, that's a part of what we're working on.
I, I need to say that I have never heard that moving the post office was ever part of the urban renewal plan.
No, I didn't say it was part of the urban renewal plan.
Well, yeah, you did.
No, I said it's been conversations about.
Yeah, well, that's only in the last little while and stuff, and I can, I mean, I don't want the post office to move because the carousel was built, and I don't think those parking places around it with our streetscape and everything was designated just for the carousel. We made it because we thought it was going to be more parking and whatever, but I, I think the post office is getting a raw deal here. And not all of us want the post office to move. And so, you know, and I can understand where the people are getting the brunt of this, like, you guys are, I mean, dirty dogs, you know?
Well, they think that we are blocking the carousel from har, from parking.
Right.
It's like, how did we become the blame for this? I just, you know, I just, we are all astounded. This morning, when I stood up and talked at the morning safety stand-up, I'm just like, I cannot believe that this is going on, that they're going to take our parking places because we're all going to end up paying for them.
Well, I've got to jump in. Those are not your parking places. Those are public streets. You do own the post office. That is federal. The streets, not at all. So, if we've created more spaces and in the process are able to give back many of them and try and designate them for parking for employees of, ala, aka, the post office, that's a good thing. But they were never, and never are, will be, post office property.
Well, I guess I'm just saying, because it's that side, the Kalapuaia side, and that has been all these years.
And I do understand that you happen to be in the, in the place where you, people walk in and you get the blame. Smile and say, "Talk to your city councilor. Thank you, and we're done with the conversation."
They're welcome to call me.
Your Honor. Question for Ron. And you've got the drawing. I didn't bring it from Monday. But talking about the parking spots on Kalapuaia, and it says there were eight originally, and now there's how many?
19.
19. And so, to her point, when you say there were eight, did that take into account both sides of, of the street?
The eight was, the eight spaces were only on the post office side of the street.
East side.
There are probably, I don't remember the sketches, something less than that on the opposite side.
But those are all gone now, right?
Those are, those are still there.
Oh, they aren't?
They're still unregulated. You know, they're not posted for anything. There's nothing in any of the resolutions you've looked at to this point that would put any kind of a restriction on those. So, you know, in terms of Kalapuaia, all you've been discussing to this point is what to do with the east side of the street.
And seeing on the map before, this map, aerial map was done before we did the streetscape, and there was three spaces across on the west, on the west side of Kalapuaia before. So, and I, Lisa, do you know how many are there? I believe there's still about three there.
There's some driveways on that side. I would, I would guess five to six, just based on that between driveways that I've accounted.
There is currently parking on the west side of Kalapuaia, between first and second.
In between the driveways and to the office complex.
Well, we do have a postmaster now. And so, she is, I asked her actually to come with me tonight, but she was busy. So, you can speak to her, which would be-
I would love to meet with her, yeah.
Her name's Pam Moody, and she's a very pleasant woman, and she'll give you all the information.
I'd love to meet with her and give her the history of Albany, so, yeah, and our urban renewal.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
I guess I would make the point, the council has not decided anything about moving the post office.
And I never stated that we have.
Well, you inferred that it's in, kind of in the works, and it may be in the works with your committee, but it is not, it has never been brought to the council. The council has not been, not had voted on it or decided that we wanted to do it. And it's, I mean, we're, we get, we're leaving the impression with folks that this is somehow a train that's running down some tracks, and it is not. It has not been decided by the council.
And I never stated it did, it had been. Okay. So, counsel, before you, anyone else wanted to speak on the parking? This is the resolution, and so, to clarify, Ron had suggested that if we want to do changes to Second Street to bring that back in a second resolution. So, this would be over Kalapuaia only.
I think this is premature. I think Ron should, should be able to go and see what signage should look like on both Second and Kalapuaia to how easy it would be to split it up and bring it back. And I think with the idea that we don't take any more, restrict any more spaces, then it's absolutely necessary. So, there are spaces for volunteers, and there are still the spaces for the people who have used them in the past.
Yeah, Bill?
I also think that we need to explore a little more the use of that lot to the north. And, and I see you sitting back there, we talked about it a little bit Monday, and understand the senior senator gets a little possessive of that area when, when there's some activities, but I agree with Rich. I, I think it's premature that there ought to be, look at that a little harder and see if we can't eke out some spots for, for the volunteers at the carousel. So, I plan to vote no.
Okay. Any other comments, or, Dick?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of solving the problem for the volunteers at the carousel. But I think I'd like to see a little more concrete in the plan that we're coming up with. I think we're a little bit loosey-goosey at this point. I'd like to kind of see it firmed up a little bit more. So, I'm going to vote no.
Well, we don't have a motion on it, so it looks like to hold it over.
I thought we did.
Yeah. Okay, all right. All right, so we'll bring this back at the next meeting, so.
I would like to see the post office postmaster involved in this conversation. Also, at the next work session, because I detect a note of frustration on their part, and-
She hasn't been at one meeting, as I recall.
Okay, well, I, I would just like to see them invited to the meeting so that they have a voice in this because it's going to affect their operations.
Ray, I, I think to add to what you just said, it, it's more than one meeting because if I understood the union rep who spoke on behalf of the post office, they're aware of the meetings that the mayor's been having with that committee about moving the post office, and it's been on Hostel's blog and so forth and so on. So, you know, they're getting the impression, according to this lady, that, you know, we're out to get them. And it's more than just one meeting. It's been going on for, what, two, two or three months?
Yeah. And Dick and Mike are on that committee too.
Right.
Okay, all right. This will come back at our next meeting, and let's make sure that it comes back at the work session first before the council meeting, just so we can kind of work through if there's any other issues that arise.
Unless they have a, Ted, we're not going to have a particular meeting too.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Okay. Next, counsel, is adoption of the consent calendar. And there's only a couple items on there. If there isn't any items that need to be pulled on for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for the adoption of the consent calendar?
Take it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carry. Okay, next is appointing Paolo Matano to the Community Development Commission. And she is replacing one person that had resigned that was on your last meeting.
She doesn't say I can't remember the name.
Okay, that was Iris.
I would move for the approval of the appointment.
Take it.
And send a thank you to the person doing that.
And we always send a certificate. Okay? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carry. All right. Next is business from the council, and Rich, is there anything this evening?
Hi.
Okay, Ray?
Yes, just something anecdotal to the Microsoft Office 365. Microsoft has seemed to be pushing, pushing everybody to the cloud and all this sort of process. It's interesting that you can actually buy the absolute full-blown Microsoft Office 2016 Professional Plus or Pro for less than $20 now with a valid license. The whole standalone, everything. If anybody's interested, I can get you the information. I happen to like the standalone more, more so than the cloud-type stuff.
Licensed?
License? It seems kind of strange because it goes through a weird site, but you submit the license, it activates just beautifully, and life is good, you know?
Someplace in Belarus.
No, no. Just passing that on, if anybody wants to know, I can get them that information.
Well, you know, it's, they're, they're going more and more to, this is a tenure cycle for them. I mean, QuickBooks stopped supporting their stuff in three years. It just floored me.
Yeah, I, I was using Office 2007, and all of a sudden, I can get 2016? I said, "Are you sure?" Yeah, so, I've got the details if anybody's interested.
Okay, he, when he gave it to me to be circulated, he said he wasn't submitting it to, to say, he just wanted it to be circulated for everyone to see.
Okay. Normally, Stephen, normally when something's circulated, it's public record then? Is there any way that, or maybe find out then from Mary, well, she might give, give Stephen's contact information. She might want to contact him to get another copy.
Yeah, we could redact personal information.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Mary can work it out then.
We get back.
On it, just get the contact information. Okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay.
Ron left. He escaped. My question was for him, and maybe you can help me out with this.
Probably not. I'll get back to you.
You're a pretty smart man. I had a complaint. There's two truck-driving schools in Albany. And one of the routes they go is down Main from Pacific headed towards the roundabout and down in that area. And they're pulling 50, 53-foot, this was from a complaint from a business owner, they're pulling 53-foot trailers. And to get around that corner, they're, the corners when they're turning, they're tearing up his parking lot because they have to go all the way into the parking lot to, to turn. And he wants to know if there's something that can be done to alternate that route. And from what he was told, there isn't because that's the route that DMV takes the truck drivers on to get their CDL. But they're tearing up the par, they're tearing up his parking lot. He's got to re-patch it all the time. It's Signs Express.
There's a detour signed there.
Huh?
There's, there's, there are signs there designate, detouring trucks around that.
Well, they're, they're coming down Main, and they're tearing it up.
That's amazing, okay. I think the signs are on Salem Avenue.
So, if you go see Arthur Meeker-
You mean on Extreme Graphics?
Yeah, Extreme Graphics. And they're all the same.
Arthur would hit us with you.
Yeah, yeah, he would. He would.
There's big blocks of concrete to stop them.
But anyway, he wanted to know if there was anything that can be done because he's had to patch his parking lot a couple of times. And the other, the other thing along with that, I'd like to thank the police department for putting the patrol officer right first in Washington because first in Washington and second in Washington can get pretty interesting because people don't see those stop signs and they're blowing through. So, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys for getting a patrol officer down there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mike. And Bessie?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Bill?
Did you get my email about the painting?
About what? Excuse me?
The yellow paint from the mailboxes?
Yes, I responded.
Oh, okay.
Chris Bailey's group manages that, so I asked Chris to get back in touch with you.
I'll check it later. Thank you. That's it?
Speaking of Washington Street, my neighbors complained about the speed on Washington Street. And they're wondering if maybe a stop sign could be placed at Seventh and Washington to slow people down so that they will be less of a, I think we've had a couple of wrecks on Seventh and Washington. Neighbors find it annoying that the speed is so great there so much of the time.
All right. And I didn't have anything this evening. And Peter, do you have anything to report on?
Sure. Just two things. One, at the last meeting, there was a concern about SB 719 that was raised. And just to let you know that Chief Latanzio will be addressing those concerns at our meeting on November 6th, okay? And then, one more thing. The Budget Committee, the first meeting of the Budget Committee this year will be November 7th, which is, I understand it as a little earlier than usual, but that gives me a chance to get a little bit of a head start and us to get a little bit of a chance to link the strategic plan to the budget. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Staff have anything? Marilyn?
To add on to Peter's mention of the Budget Committee meeting, that meeting has been scheduled in the Ralston Meeting Room at Station 11.
Hoorah!
6:30 PM.
Okay. I've got to get that on my calendar yet. Okay. Staff have anything else? So, okay. With that, we will recess to executive session to discuss real property transactions in accordance with ORS 192.6602E. And before we do that, let's take a five-minute break.